All right, I will call this meeting to order. The Peewaqui School District Board Meeting for Monday, November tenth. I will start with roll call. Larry?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Ashley?
Here.
Stacy?
Here.
Mary?
Here.
And Travis is absent this evening. Was the meeting properly noticed?
The meeting was properly noticed.
And can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
No move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
All right, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, the highlight of our evening, our student board report. Anna Moore, take it away.
All right. Okay, for our November board report, the first topic of discussion is Operation Christmas Child. So at our school, we had a fundraiser for this on October fourteenth through the twenty-first. It was run by Samantha Caravan, which is a senior. Um, it was mostly done through Faith Club, um, but it was also something she kind of took the initiative for on her own. She did receive some help from like Mr. Getch and stuff. Um, but yeah, she did all of it on her own. She put together the donation items list and then, um, every donation got organized into a shoebox. Um, this project is normally run by Samaritan's Purse and the donations reach millions of children around the world each year, which is really cool that she kind of took the initiative to do this on her own. Um, next we have Key Club Board.
So we kind of made a new format for Key Club this year. It's switch advisors for the third time in the past few years. So we weren't quite like knowing what to expect, but we have made some career-specific volunteer opportunities. That's what Ms. Wacker is looking for, who's our advisor. There's a lot of new volunteer opportunities this year and I'm on the board. So we're looking for new fundraising and community events, which are being brainstormed by the board. So like community bingo, um, and like a toy and toy like toiletry drives on my dad.
Um, next we have our fall and Halloween festivities. So there are a lot of these events this fall. Um, so the creative writing classes and the child development classes paired together to create pumpkins and poems with Mrs. LeBlanc's 4K class. This was really fun. A lot of the four here is really excited to read their poems out loud to each other. It was just really cute to see them all get excited about that. Um, and then student council also ran events at the high school, which was really fun and exciting. So students dressed in Halloween costumes could go trick-or-treating at lunch. Um, resource sessions in the library with coloring sheets, hot chocolate and cookies, which was something fun for especially the freshmen and sophomores who have to come to resource, something that they could sign up to do in the morning as a little relaxation thing. And then there was also a bat hunt that, um, Mrs. Sevens organized. And if you find one of, found one of the three bats, um, you won a ten-dollar gift card, which was really interesting. I haven't seen that in any of the other years. So that was kind of fun. I know everybody got kind of competitive about that, but...
Were all three bats found?
Yes, yeah.
So every teacher had one bat to hide.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Um, and then Mrs. Falk's first grade class drew monsters for, um, the fashion construction classes to sew their creations. So it was kind of cute to see like the fashion construction classes take what they learned and then bring to life the first graders like ideas and imaginations. And then also PLN Horizon dressed up to celebrate, which is always super cute.
So for some lusin' recognitions, we have the guidance counselors for coordinating guest speakers during future ready days. Derek Watt for speaking to Horizon about the significance of being a good friend, teammate and classmate. And student council for putting together fun Halloween activities.
For athletics and activities, we have quite a few, just as we're coming to the end of the fall season and we have all of our sports starting to wrap up. Um, so boys soccer finished fifth in conference. Hope squad did laughter yoga during resource on October thirtieth. That was really fun. Um, I'm not sure if we're gonna end up doing it again, but it was pretty interesting. They had everybody out in like the new area of the school and did laughing yoga. Um...
Can you explain that? I don't know what that means.
Yeah, so it's, um, I didn't go, but I'm in Hope Squad, so I heard a lot about it from the people that are in the club. And they said that it was essentially just doing like yoga poses, but laughing. And then eventually like it was supposed to be contagious and it was really interesting, but I mean, I don't know. I don't know if I'd want to do that at seven-thirty in the morning, but I'm sure that was a fun pick-me-up for a lot of kids, just to get a good start to the day. Um, JV and Varsity Girls Cross Country finished first at conference. That's always fun to hear about their... They always seem to do really well at conference, but that's always exciting. And then mountain biking, Callie Anderson was the first rider in Peewaqui history to win the overall series. And the team overall placed fourteenth out of ninety-eight Wisconsin teams on October twenty-sixth. Um, PHS Drama had Peter and the Star Catcher and that's showing, I think it's next weekend. Um, but yeah, they've been working really hard on that and I've heard a lot of good things about it, so I'm excited to see it. Um, and then Faith Club did a trunk-or-treat on October twenty-fourth. Best buddies had their first meeting and they all decorated locker signs. Football, um, for the fourth time in school history, made their way to the sectional finals and then in the WIAA playoffs. And the dance team placed first place, um, at the Hortonville Dance Invite in Jazz and Hip-Hop. And Allison Willery took fifth, um, Zoe Keck took third, and Autumn Flagstad took first. And then Academic Decathlon, um, held a Panera fundraiser to raise money for their team, which is also really exciting. And then also I'd like to add that this morning, I found out that the girls swim team is headed to states, state for I believe four events, maybe it is, um, which is, yeah, which is quite a few. So that's really exciting too. And then just for the learning spotlight, we have creative writing classes. They created their own poem books, which was really cool just to see creative writing come to light. And they were able to decorate their own covers and, um, put like decals onto their pages. And it was just a really great way for the students to express themselves. Um, math classrooms, I know we talked about this in principal advisory board, but, um, they implemented a lot of boardwork stuff, which creates like friendly competition in the classes, which is really cool. Um, I think it's really fun. I don't know. Do you have anything to say about that?
I think Getch makes it really fun.
Yeah.
Like when I had math first hour last year, I was not up for the boardwork.
But it's very like competitive and everybody gets really excited about it. Um, and then for future ready days, they had ACT testing for ninth through eleventh graders, workshops for college applications, scholarships and math placement testing. And then Model UN went to, uh, the Carthage Conference on November seventh and I got to go to that. That was really fun. And then the Spanish classes, Mrs. Gerdman's classes are creating a Spanish art gallery, creating a model of the Prado Museum. So just some fun things that they've been working on and thank you.
Wow, that was a lot.
Yeah.
Good job, girls.
Thank you.
That was awesome. Thank you.
Great report.
Uh, so when does the swim team?
Um, I'm not sure.
It's probably this, if, yeah, I would think it's this week. Yeah, so it's probably Friday, I would guess.
It's pretty exciting.
Mm-hmm.
And the football team lost in the sectional final? Was it the final or was it the first sectional game?
It is the sectional semifinal.
Okay.
Yep.
Against Reesburg.
Okay. Was it, it was close though, wasn't it?
I don't know what the score was.
It was fourteen-nothing had started and they lost thirty-eight, fourteen.
Oh, no, it wasn't close. Good season though. Mm-hmm. They played hard. Well, thank you so much. That was a great report out. Um, next is salute some recognitions. I'll start with the board. Does anybody have anything? Sadly, I don't and the girls did such a good job on their report. I'm glad they had some. Okay, admin.
Does anyone have any?
I do.
Go ahead.
Tammy, I'll get you, uh, the names, but I want to recognize our, uh, math curriculum, curriculum leads in each of the four buildings. We started the initial process for the math curriculum renewal and we met last week. We got a half-day with each, with each of the teams and the teams were really engaged and we had some great conversations. So I'm excited to see, uh, that work continue for the next two years.
Um, I'm just gonna do, uh, two quick ones. Nellie Baum and Brianna Rembert, um, just are really supporting a student and a family that's really needing a lot of support right now. So I appreciate the good work that they're doing.
Awesome. Tammy, I just want to make sure. Are there any citizen comments?
No citizen comments.
Thank you. Um, next consent agenda, can I get a motion to accept as... I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
All right, next Business Affairs Committee. Stacy, I'll let you report out.
Okay, uh, we had the Chartwells annual presentation, uh, this evening. Um, Larry, right? Larry couldn't be with us, so...
Donato.
Donato. Yeah, I couldn't spell it, so I didn't write it down. Donato, which is his, uh, boss came, which was really awesome. Um, and he just kind of summarized what they've got going on. Um, I'm a numbers girl, so I wrote down some of the numbers. Our breakfast numbers are up about four percent. Uh, they served two-hundred-and-eighty thousand lunches. Um, and our à la carte is, um, around two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars every year. So, uh, lots of success going on there and Donato is very passionate about healthy food and what's put in front of our kids. So it was just a really good talk. Is there anything you want to add about that one?
Just a couple of things on the food service program. As we, we look from a budget perspective, some of the equipment that we're, um, we didn't anticipate going into the year. We, we always anticipate a couple of pieces of equipment. Uh, I think we're pushing four now that have reached the end of their useful life that we're replacing, so...
Freezers.
Freezers, particularly. So we'll be addressing those, uh, this year and keep an eye on the financial performance throughout the year.
And a new minivan.
Yeah, replacement minivan.
Yeah, replacement, not new.
The one that's, that we're using right now.
All right, yeah, so that's the food service report. Um, then we went over the check register. There wasn't a lot of questions on there. We went over the, um, income statement. Um, we're looking at, as normal, about three percent of our revenue received. Um, equalization aid, we got about fifteen percent of our prior, um, prior year amount received, which is seven-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. Uh, and we'll get the next distribution around twelve-one, which will be about four million. Um, so that's, because of that, we'll be probably taking out a draw on that line of credit, um, which John expects will be approximately a million dollars, which is about what we did last year. And then we should be able to pay it back within a week, which is what we also did last year. Our expenses are, um, trending around twenty-four percent of budget, um, which is right on par with everything. Um, payroll is close to budget, which is good. Uh, we talked a little bit about health insurance. We're at about a ninety-seven percent loss ratio, which is typical, um, at this time of year, until the specific limits are met at the individual level. So each employee has a level, uh, limit. Um, once we meet that, then the stopgap will kick in. Um, and then we talked a little bit about our capital project. We have about ten million dollars remaining. Um, the expenses that we've paid are running a little behind budget, which means that our interest earnings are a little higher than we budgeted, but pleased with everything going there. Do you want to say anything more?
Yeah, that the first phase of this construction project is really moving fast right now. Uh, we're, we're anticipating delivery of furniture and equipment, which is one of the last phases before we start using the spaces, uh, on or on December fifteenth. So, uh, highly likely at this point that phase one of the construction project, we will be able to start utilizing in January.
That's it.
Thanks for the pictures. I love the pictures. That area, uh, with the curtain wall, what area is that gonna be?
Uh, that is the exterior of the Innovation Center. So, yeah.
Very cool.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. All right, can I get a motion to accept the Business Affairs Report?
Motion to approve the Business Affairs Report as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
Next, we move on to new business and, um, we're looking at new course proposals, uh, revisions. Um, it looks like some really good coursework to me. Anthony, I'm, I'm gonna let you just kind of take the floor.
Yeah, each, each fall we bring new courses to the board, um, just so that you can initially, um, take action to approve, so that we can get them in the course guides, uh, for students, so they can get cla- classes signed up. That begins approximately in January. Um, you guys will have the final say and the final approval in spring, where you will see the full curriculum. But as you can see, we specifically have high school tech ed course, courses that are being brought forward. Uh, they chose to delay a year. If you remember last spring, you guys approved all of the other high school CTE courses, but they wanted to wait until the new spaces were completed to start the new courses. So what you see is just a brief description of each of the courses, which standards they align to. And then there were some name changes, but as you can see, there's also a lot of new courses that our new spaces will, um, will help support. Questions on any of those?
I'm just excited to see the interest that we'll, that we'll get in these tech ed courses. So excited for that. Anybody have any questions for Anthony? All right. Then moving right along, uh, Mike, I'm gonna turn it over to you because we're gonna, um, consider the calendars for the next two school years.
Uh, yes, so we always try to, uh, stay out in front of calendars a little bit. Uh, so two things, uh, that I included in the memorandum for you tonight, along with the background in terms of all the constraints that go into constructing the annual calendar, uh, a, an adjustment to the twenty-six, uh, twenty-seven calendar, um, which would move a professional development day, uh, change that to a student contact day, uh, and move that into a summer, uh, professional development day for teachers. Um, and a, an adjustment from a three to a four-day, uh, teacher in-service, which is what we also did this year. This, uh, balances out the work calendar with the student day count that we need to meet hours for that calendar. So we had a, a counting, uh, error with days on that one. We needed to make that adjustment to make sure we get that extra student day in there. Um, the other piece is the proposal for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar. Uh, that one lays out, uh, really, uh, pretty cleanly. Um, you know, usually we, we get a lot of, there's a lot of interest in, in trying to get out that first week of June, if possible, uh, in twenty-twenty-eight. The first Friday in June is June second. That's awfully early. That's not gonna be feasible, uh, for us to get out that soon. So that actually gives a little flexibility as you get into the next week. Um, and we did, I worked through this with my superintendent advisory council. We decided to do a little surveying of staff. Uh, the staff was, uh, I would say a solid two-thirds in support of going right to that Friday, June ninth, uh, which works out really smooth. And it also allows days like December twenty-third to be an off day, which I think will be pretty well-received, um, as well as, uh, adding a day off in October, which had historically been a part of the calendar, um, in years past. So, um, that was supported by the staff, uh, in their assessment and those are kind of the features of that calendar. But I'd be happy to take any questions. Otherwise, I would seek your motion to approve the adjustment to the twenty, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar and the adoption of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar.
I was curious, Mike, um, you made reference on the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year that we could go back to the Friday commencement ceremony. Has there been interest in that? Like, has the feedback been?
Yeah, so historically, and this has been, this has been the challenge, it kind of goes to my previous comment. For a long time, we almost always finished in the second Friday in June. Um, there was interest from parents and from staff and not having to push to that second Friday if possible. It felt late, uh, to some of our families. We were kind of, the high school commencement was kind of driving the calendar.
Okay.
Um, because we had always historically targeted a Friday night graduation, uh, which, as you know, has lead, led to some changes because that first Friday in June is typically a challenge because that's usually the state track meet and we often have ten, fifteen-plus kids at least in the senior class of twenty, uh, who are members of the track team and we have quite a few that go to state. And so we don't want a commencement ceremony that would conflict with that competition and potentially put families in a difficult spot, not be able to attend commencement or not be able to attend their state competition. So that's led to things like our Saturday graduations and, and those different, uh, things with that weekend. Um, so, uh, sta- so we've had, where seniors are actually graduating early, um, sometimes a week early, finishing their coursework, uh, up and, and, um, not all of our staff love that.
Oh, okay.
Option. So there's definitely some of the comments in the survey as they would love to just get back to that Friday night, uh, graduation. We tend to have some differing of opinions between maybe our middle secondary staff and our elementary staff. Elementary staff tends to wanna, um, really push for that earlier finish. And secondary staff tends to want maybe a little more flexibility during the year. And I'm speaking very generally because there's different opinions in all the buildings. Um, so that's, that, that's what goes back to what we did for almost the entire time Marty was principal, which was twenty-five years.
So are we removing or abandoning the, the concept of those seniors finishing a week early this, the next year, the twenty...
In twenty-seven, twenty-eight. In twenty-seven, twenty-eight, there'd be no reason.
Okay, in twenty-six, twenty-seven, it'll still be like that?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, I believe they still would be graduating early. I'd have to go back and look at that.
And then they'll have that, like, they won't be in the building? Do you want I'm talking about like how they, the seniors would finish?
Yes.
Before, okay.
Yeah.
So this next spring, uh, what, what date are we looking at for graduation?
Let me pull that up here.
In twenty-six? Yeah.
Moment. Uh, oh yeah, 'cause it still says to be determined. I believe, uh, we're looking at... Yeah, I think it's Friday the fifth, right? Well, it'd be June, June fourth is that Friday, but I believe that's state track. So it might be, uh, Saturday the twenty-ninth of May.
Oh, really?
So it could be that. I'd have to double-check with Brian as to where that's at.
Okay.
Let you know.
Wait, I, wait, Friday the twenty-ninth? Saturday.
On the twenty-seventh would be Saturday the twenty-ninth, probably.
What year are you looking at? Twenty-seven?
May of twenty-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at twenty-six. Okay, okay, okay.
So it could be that, that twenty-eighth, that Friday night or Saturday, that twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Most likely. And then everybody else is out June fourth.
Okay. Any other questions about the proposed calendars? All right, then I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the revised twenty-six, twenty-two-six, twenty-seven school year calendar as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year calendar as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
All right, moving along, um, approval of the SWSA fiscal agent change. Mike, you want to address?
Yeah, so this is the Southeast, Eastern Wisconsin Schools Alliance. We're already a member. The board's already approved our membership for this year, but there's been a change for a number of years. South Milwaukee served as the fiscal agent of SWSA. Uh, CISA One is now serving as the fiscal agent. So we just need to approve the revised agreement. Um, and any of these agreements, the board needs to do the approval. Um, so CISA One has taken over as the fiscal agent. It has no other impact on us. Our dues haven't changed or anything of that nature. It's just that the fiscal agent has changed, so the, uh, agreement needed to be updated.
And just FYI kind of information, there's a group out there called the Wisconsin Rural School Alliance and their fiscal agent is the CISA Five office in Portage. So it's a common practice apparently for them to be able to pick it up and they wanted to maintain it as that sixty-six, John, no, wait a little bit. Yeah, I mean, 'cause that's like the legal inter-government kind of agency organizations that are out there. So it works from that standpoint. And, and I think like, I mean, the, uh, who was it? South Milwaukee or they were their fiscal agent for many, many years. And they just said, okay, we want out of this at this point in time, so...
It makes sense to me.
In fact, tomorrow, we have a meeting, uh, membership meeting at the CISA One office here too, so...
Seven-thirty tomorrow morning.
All right, you want to make a motion, Larry?
Sure, I move to approve, move to approve the fiscal agent change for SWSA from South Milwaukee to the CISA One as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
All right, personnel issues. No resignations, no employments, but we do have an extend of F M L A.
Yeah, you have a request from teacher Shannon Bishop, um, having a child. And she explains in her letter, desire to extend that leave a little bit because of some childcare nuances that they're gonna be navigating as a family. I certainly, um, support, uh, Shannon's request. And take any, uh, questions that you have. Otherwise, I'd seek your approval of the extended leave for Shannon Bishop.
I'm, I move to approve. I'm, I move to approve the, uh, extended absence of Shannon Bishop in the spring semester of twenty-twenty-six.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
All right, board goals and operations, upcoming activities. Our next board meeting will be Monday, November twenty-fourth. We'll have a policy committee meeting that night at six P M., followed by a regular board meeting at seven P M. Plan for that one to go a little longer, 'cause we will be doing school C I Rs that evening. Um, there's one board meeting in December that was moved, and it's Monday, December fifteenth. Business affairs at six, regular board meeting at seven, and hoping for some Christmas spirits afterwards. Um, then, in January, um, our one board meeting is on the twelfth. Business affairs is at six, regular board meeting at seven. And then a really neat event in January, every year down in Milwaukee, is the W A S B State Education Convention. Um, I've been going every year. Last year, Larry, Stacy, Matt, and myself went. Uh, there's just some really neat information to be gleaned from going and listening, um, to the sessions, as well as, I'm always impressed with the speakers, they're always just really great. So, um, registration is open up until December fifteenth, registration is a little bit cheaper. So, if you have any idea that you're gonna go, get Tammy to get you registered, so you can save a few bucks.
If you saw this magazine come through yet or not, but it has all of the sessions, all the keynote speakers that are there. Uh, there's some pre-conference sessions, but the basics are there, total stuff. So, if you want to get familiar with what's gonna be presented, they don't have the time slots all figured out just yet, but they've got most everything else covered, so.
Do we only have one presentation this year, and it's the one on the A I?
It's the A I related one, yep.
John, you're not doing? Oh, I'm so, okay.
Just getting lazy.
I am, I'm floored, I look forward to those every year, oh my gosh. Okay, well, you deserve a break. Thank you. All right, uh, let's see, legislative advocacy update.
Um, uh, I, uh, kind of in some of the information I'd shared with you guys on Friday, there's just kind of this cluster of bills that are, are going forward. Um, I don't, it, my understanding is it's more about setting the political agenda kind of for the spring session than it is likely that many of these would be passed. The, um, SWSA is kind of, uh, our go-to on, um, watching the legislation and, and to lead us into some advocacy, depending on what might be gaining traction, or what might be of interest. You know, it's ranging from things on driver's ed to, um, proposed legislation related to reporting to parents about student behaviors. Um, to, uh, there's one proposal that would eliminate, starting in the next by noon, the three hundred and twenty-five dollar per pupil. You recall, the governor with the line item veto had instituted a annual increase for four hundred years on the three twenty-five. So, there's proposed legislation that would, um, eliminate that, starting, I think, twenty-seven. Um, so those are all things, um, that we'll continue to monitor, um, and we'll be reaching out again to Senator Hutton and Representative Nayland, just to kind of continue to be in touch with them. Uh, don't really, unless, John, you think differently, see a lot of likelihood that, that much is gonna get done or action's gonna happen here in the next, prior to the holidays.
You know, it's gonna be, it'd be a busy time there, but, um, stuff that comes out of it to impact us is probably next session.
I mean, that's probably true. There was something, though, that was proposed, I think, related to the math literacy.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, so there's, um, some efforts to do kind of a math version of Act twenty. Um, so there's some, I don't know, Anthony, if you have any more on that, but there's, there's a, a very, um, preliminary proposal, I think, related to kind of something, with some of the similar components that used to on Act twenty for literacy.
Yeah, it, in reading through it, it, it does not look to be as in-depth as Act twenty was from a curricular side of things. Uh, what it does lay out is having, you know, for reading, there were students that if they met a certain threshold, needed to have a formalized reading plan. From what I read, it's gonna do that but for math. Um, which we kind of already have that internally in place with our M T S S system. Um, but that was my interpretation.
Yeah, there's like assessments, too, that are there on a very defined schedule in terms of start of the school year, mid-year, and then forty-five days, I think, before the end of the school year.
Which is the same as the Act twenty literacy law. And it would, I don't know what, if they would mandate which type of universal screener we would have to use, but I think we would be set up well, because we did switch over to, uh, Ames Web Plus, which is the literacy, literacy screener that the state adopted. We're using that for math as well. I would think that they probably would choose to use the same tool, just for math, so we would be set up, I think, very well.
Yeah, and in reading, you had kind of this big philosophical debate between kind of balanced literacy and science of literacy. You don't really have something like that in math. Um, so, that's a piece that's really not a big part of this. But, um, yeah, I would hope if that goes through that, the Ames Web, it would make, that would be the logical thing. But that doesn't mean that's what ultimately will happen, so.
And either, one other quick topic, 'cause I know you guys are planning to go to it. Uh, CISA one is hosting a, um, workshop, like, actually, I think almost an all-day, on declining enrollment. Uh, so, that's one of the hot topics that's out there. And over the weekend, kind of came across some things, it's not officially, there's not like, everybody's signed off on it to create a bill. But there were four or five pieces of legislation that are being proposed to address the declining enrollment and potential consolidation of school districts, uh, across the state with some potential financial incentives for it. But also that the D P I would be getting some funding, uh, which they have to go and pursue with the Joint Finance Committee, uh, be able to do some, uh, initial feasibility studies on consolidations of schools a- around the state, in terms of some of them that are in really, really, I would say, desperate financial situations that are out there. And again, whether that's rural Wisconsin, but even in our own area, if you think about Arrowhead and their feeder districts, 'cause all of the feeders are separate standalone school districts, and so, they might be candidates for consolidation as well. And I think, is it Glendale, River Hills, some of those school districts up there?
Kettle Marine and Waukesha also were looking at closing some.
Yeah, no, this is more than just closing schools, this is like, actually consolidate.
Consolidating districts.
So, school districts would be coming together, so, yeah. Right, other than, right, uh, Kettle Marine and, and Waukesha have, are making decisions to physically shut down school buildings, if you will, so. But yeah, this would be like the consolidation.
A lot of the smaller boroughs, but the problem with those, usually, they're so spread out. And then, but you have, right, like you mentioned, union high schools with feeder districts, those would be candidates for consolidation, so, yep, that's definitely.
Yeah, I guess, I don't, I, I was kind of impressed, though, I mean, we'll have to wait and see what's actually gonna get, uh, carried forward. But it was like, apparently, the state legislature and, you know, kind of being a little bit more proactive about trying to get ahead of some of this stuff, so that they're not caught with a lot of surprise stuff coming up, uh, for school districts around the state, so.
But John, Anthony, and I are going, are doing the, uh, session at CISA about declining enrollment, just to, since we're hitting that trend here, so, so we can be as informed and as planned as possible.
Awesome, thank you, Mike. Um, Tammy, any comments from citizens?
Ezri, nothing? No?
Oh, gosh. Okay, with that, then, um, I'm gonna look for a motion to put us into closed session in accordance with State Statute nineteen point eight-five-one C, which considers employment promotion, compensation, performance, uh, evaluation data. Really, tonight, it's about succession planning.
So moved, to move to closed session.
Second. And I believe this calls for a roll.
Yes.
Call vote. Um, Mary?
Abstain.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so moved.
Thanks, and we won't, we won't be coming back into open session.